Thank you. Good evening. As Chairman of Hartford Board of Education, I hereby call to order January sixteenth, twenty twenty four, regular meeting. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. The Board Superintendent and I are pleased that you have joined us to celebrate achievement, review information, and make policies, decisions related to the effective operation of Hartford Public Schools. This is a regular meeting and all meetings will be discussed or voted on this evening have been posted as required by state law. As the Hartford Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approved budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policies for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve the problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the superintendent. The monthly meetings of the board are open to the public. They are the time when the board conducts its business of governing the school system in a public arena. The regular meetings are not meetings with the public, therefore comments from the audience will be confined to the time designated for the public to address the board. Decorum and courtesy are part elements in effective public meetings. Please silence your cell phones or communication devices and refrain from taking and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it is legally mandated that proceedings be accurately recorded, I may have to ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased that you have taken this time to join us this evening. We are very proud of the school systems and thank you for your interest in Hartford Public Schools. Now this be read in Spanish.
Buenas noches. El presidente de la Junta de Educación de las Escuelas Públicas de Hartford ha llamado a orden esta reunión ordinaria de la junta el dieciséis de enero del dos mil veinticuatro. Damos una calidad bienvenida a todos los las personas presentes que están aquí con nosotros televidentes. La junta y la superintendente se complacen que se haya unido a nosotros para celebrar logros, revisar información y tomar decisiones relacionadas con el funcionamiento efectivo de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Esta es una reunión ordinaria y todos los asuntos que serán discutidos o votados en esta tarde han sido notificados como lo requiere la ley estatal. Como Junta de Educación de Hartford, estamos aquí para establecer las metas, escuchar los informes de la superintendente, aprobar los presupuestos, contratos y nombramientos de personal, y establecer normas para el distrito. No estamos aquí para tomar decisiones administrativas o resolver problemas individuales. La administración es la responsabilidad de la superintendente. Las reuniones mensuales de la junta están abiertas al público. Son el momento en que la junta lleva a cabo su tarea de gobernar el sistema escolar en un espacio público. Las reuniones regulares no son reuniones con el público. Por lo tanto, los comentarios de la audiencia se limitarán al tiempo designado para el público dirigirse a la junta. El decoro y la cortesía son elementos importantes en reuniones públicas eficaces. Por favor, silencie sus teléfonicos, sus teléfonos celulares o dispositivos de comunicación y abstengase de hablar mientras otros están hablando, ya que es mandato legal que de que los procedimientos sean grabados con precisión. Es posible que tengamos que pedir orden periódicamente si el ruido interfiere con nuestras capacidades de grabación. Nos complace que se haya tomado el tiempo para esta tarde para unirse a nosotros y estamos orgullosos de este sistema escolar y les damos gracias por su interés en las Escuelas Públicas de Hartford.
Thank you. Before we move to public comment, I do want to make a quick announcement. I do want to welcome Chief Ratley to her first meeting and want to say congratulations again on your appointment. Secondly, I do want to wish everyone a Happy New Year as I mentioned earlier. I don't think I had a chance to meet or see everyone yet in the new year, so Happy New Year to all those folks out there in TV land as well. And then thirdly, I do want to make for public assumption that this meeting is virtual. This was a decision made not to postpone this meeting and use our virtual capabilities to make sure that we were mindful of everyone's schedule and calendars and so forth. So I just want to make that put that on notice for the public. With that said, we will now move on to public comment. Ms. Ledger?
Thank you. I'm sorry I had to take myself off of mute. Give me one moment. Thank you. We as a board in collaboration with the superintendent and district leadership are committed to cultivating a culture of excellence at all levels of HPS. We thank you for taking the time to attend tonight's board meeting. We appreciate you coming out to learn more about Hartford Public Schools and for sharing your thoughts and concerns. We have established a protocol to track and respond to concerns raised. We want you to know that we take your concerns seriously. And to that end, staff will follow up within forty-eight hours if follow-up is required via the preferred method of contact the speaker has indicated on the sign-in sheet. We will follow this no-contact method of follow-up for the time being, adhering to safety protocols. As a reminder, you have three minutes to speak. At the two-minute mark, the bell will ring, letting you know that you have one minute left. At the second bell, please wrap up your comments. Now this will be read in Spanish.
Nosotros, la Junta de Educación, en colaboración con la superintendente y personal del distrito, estamos comprometidos a cultivar una cultura de excelencia en todos los niveles de las Escuelas Públicas de Hartford. Les agradecemos se haya tomado el tiempo para asistir a la reunión de la junta esa noche y por su participación y deseo de aprender más sobre las Escuelas Públicas de Hartford y también por compartir sus pensamientos y preocupaciones. Nosotros tomamos sus preocupaciones muy seriamente y hemos establecido un protocolo para el seguimiento y respuestas a inquietudes planteadas. El personal hará un seguimiento dentro de las cuarenta y ocho horas si fuera necesario a través del método de contacto preferido que el orador haya indicado en la hoja de registro. Seguiremos este método de seguimiento sin contacto por el momento y una persona investigará su caso y se comunicará con usted dentro de las cuarenta y ocho horas. Les recordamos que tienen tres minutos para hablar. Cuando hayan pasado dos minutos, el timbre sonará dejándoles saber que le queda un minuto al segundo sonido. Por favor, termine sus comentarios.
Thank you. Our first speaker is Michael Downs. I'm admitting him in from the waiting room. Michael, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, you are on for public comment.
All right. Good evening, board members and superintendent. I did read the article in the paper yesterday concerning the shortfall on the seventy-seven million-dollar shortfall that we have due to the loss of the COVID funds. Certainly, this was a great aid to the inner-city students. It was marked improvement in reading and mathematical scores in their testing. The expiration of these funds does create an education deprivation to accompany the deprivation caused by housing, food issues, and other poverty-related issues. The the offerings that these these coverings were extracurricular offerings that this money supported and the students really needed this, so they supported things like resource teachers and extracurricular activities and and other education and appropriate activities. Personally, I'm going to contact my U.S. representative and my United States senators asking that we replace all or some of this money. I don't know how good that will do, but it certainly won't hurt to try because we really need this. The students, the inner-city students really need this money and there's things, there's even more things that we need, but this money sure helped and and they're going to miss it and we're not going to be able to do as much for them in the future. One of the ways we could save, of course, is by not renewing the Education Support Services contract, the ESS contract that recruits substitute teachers and and paraprofessional teachers. I just I don't know how that's coming. I suppose someone should be able to give us a rundown about how that's, how successful that is. I don't think it will be very successful. Certainly, it's not worth two-point-five million dollars. And also, I wish everyone a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now, next speaker is Jacenya Martinez. Let me just get her in and we, she has chosen to speak in Spanish and we have Alba, our interpreter, who will interpret for her. Hold on. It says she's joining. Give one second. Jacenya, are you in the room? Can you hear me?
Jacenya se encuentra en la sala. ¿Me puede escuchar?
Jacenya? Um, Jacenya? Oh wait, I see her. Let me ask her to unmute. Jacenya está en mute si nos oye.
Jacenya, ¿si puede encender su micrófono, por favor?
Okay. Jacenya, ¿estás lista? Oh, I think we okay. In the meantime, I will call in the next. I think she dropped off. Okay, she might join again. That is, oh wait, I don't see anybody else in the waiting room now. I do have one letter that was emailed in. I will read it now for the next public comment speaker until she may or may not join again. This letter is from David Ayano, who says that he supports HPS teacher John Grande. "To be punished for critical comments during a professional development meeting is ludicrous and unjustified. There is no need to mark white privilege in quotes nor ethnic prejudice, commonly referred to as racism. All we need to do is teach the forgotten history. We need to include the Trail of Tears, Wounded Knee, and Chief Joseph of the Nez Perce." "We need to teach that peculiar institution of chattel human slavery of African-Americans that was written into the Constitution as a three-fifth compromise. We need to teach about Manzanar, the U.S. concentration camps in which we imprisoned Japanese-American citizens. We need to teach what happened at Maile in Vietnam was endemic in American war zones. I am a product of American culture, an army brat, and veteran of Vietnam. My children are quintessential Americans. They are Italian, Slovak, Japanese, French, Canadian, African-American. Four daughters and a grandson who has added Puerto Rico to the mix and a new granddaughter who has two moms. In my heart, this is America, but we won't know it if we don't teach it." Again, that was David Ayano. And I believe someone else entered. Jacenya is back. I'm going to admit her from the waiting room. Jacenya? Jacenya, if you can unmute your microphone?
Jacenya, ¿si puede encender su micrófono, por favor?
Okay, Jacenya, she I'm, oh, yeah, she's, she just chatted that she's trying. Jacenya, you are unmuted. I don't know why we can't hear you, though.
Jacenya, ¿si tiene el micrófono encendido? No sé la razón por la cual no le podemos escuchar.
Okay. Oh, I see you. Jacenya, ya te vemos, pero no te oímo. You're halfway there. I can see you speaking, but I don't hear anything. And you are unmuted.
Entonces usted ya casi llega. La puedo ver hablando, pero la puedo ver que se está moviendo los labios, está hablando, pero no la escucho. Y sí veo que tiene el micrófono encendido.
I wonder if it's something with her computer speaker or microphone.
Yes.
She might have to switch it.
Yeah. Alba, can you tell her in the bottom left, under the mute, to hit that little arrow?
Señora Jacenya, no sé si será un problema con su computador. No sé si tenga que ver quizás con la bocina. Puede ver si en la parte baja de su computador tiene un botón donde usted puede encender el micrófono.
I think we lost her. I will collect her public comment and send it in for the record and send it to the board members as well.
I'm trying to think how Ms. Martinez was communicating with us at the last Thursday's budget hearing. I think there was a
Señora Martínez, usted el jueves contestó con nosotros en la conversación del presupuesto. Estaba usando su teléfono para comunicarse con nosotros. No.
Okay, Christina, I don't know if there's anything we can do with the phone, but if she can call in or let me see. I will send her the phone number. We can that she is the last speaker. Let me just give you one second. I'm going to text her the Sorry, Alba, I did not mean to take your spot translating, but I just remembered that she was with us in the budget forum last week.
No problem. Thank you.
Tagging you back in. Jacenya, if you're still in here, I chatted the phone number for you to call.
Señora Jacenya, si todavía se encuentra acá, le acabo de enviar a través del chat. Le escribí el número de teléfono para que pueda llamar y hablar.
Oh, she was back in the waiting room. I think she's just trying to rejoin. Okay. Okay, we'll try one more time. Jacenya? Oh, perdón. Sorry.
Vamos a tratar una vez más, señora Jacenya.
Jacenya, can you chat the comments at all that you would like to say?
Jacenya, ¿se podría?
Oh, wait, Jacenya.
Aquí estoy, por fin.
Very good.
Here I am, finally.
Perseverance.
Disculpa por la demora y es madre.
I'm sorry for the delay and all this mess.
Jacenya sigue con tus comentarios.
Sí, señora Jacenya, ¿puede hablar, hacer su comentario, por favor?
Oh, okay. Este, bueno, para empezar, disculpe por la demora. Buena tarde a todos. Gracias por la oportunidad.
Well, first of all, señora Jacenya, una o dos oraciones a la vez para que la interprete pueda interpretar. First of all, good afternoon, everyone. I apologize about the delay. Continúe, por favor.
Mi nombre es Jacenya Martínez.
My name is Jacenya Martínez.
Tengo un niño en séptimo grado en Capital Prep.
I have a child in the seventh grade at Capital Prep.
Un niño que fue expulsado por problemas de seguridad y ahora está en New Vision.
It was a child that was kicked out of school because of security problems and he's now at New Vision.
Mi hijo tiene una discapacidad de developmental delay and speech delay.
My child has disability, developmental delay and speech delay.
Desde que comenzó Capital Prep, he tenido problemas por su ausencia, por los tratamientos de él y la política de la escuela.
Ever since he started at Capital Prep, he had issues with his attendance due to his medical issues and other problems.
Ya que algunas de las citas conflictían con el horario escolar y eso lo que hacía es que aumentaba su ausencia convirtiendo a mi hijo en truant.
¿Conviendo a su hijo en qué, perdón?
En un truant.
And due to the medical appointment being during the school day that was making him absent at school and he was being truant.
Eventualmente, ciertos sucesos que han pasado en la escuela.
Eventually, because of other processes that had happened in the school.
Mi hijo ha demostrado que no quiere ir a la escuela por problemas de seguridad, safety issues.
My son has said that and has shown that he doesn't want to go to school due to safety issues.
He solicitado PPT y otros servicios para mi hijo que fueron negados.
I have also asked for a PPT and other services for my child and they were denied.
Se supone que por recomendación él tenía su file four recommendation. Perdón.
And due to recommendations, he did have a five oh four.
Y la escuela lo niega porque mi hijo es inteligente.
And the school denies because my son is intelligent.
Eventualmente, por el asunto de la seguridad que no se sentía seguro en la escuela, él llevó un cuchillo a la escuela.
Eventually, due to eventually, due to safety, because he didn't feel safe at the school, he brought in a knife to the school. So two days later.
De haber tenido una reunión hablando del tema.
Two days after having a meeting, speaking about the subject.
En lo cual el psicólogo de Diego estaba en la reunión y solicitó, solicitó un PPT y se lo negaron.
Where Diego's psychologist was at the school, he asked for a PPT meeting and it was denied.
Eventualmente, él está en New Vision, en donde en menos de dos semanas.
And now he's a new vision where in less than two weeks.
Él comenzó a recibir todos sus servicios.
He started receiving all of his services.
Su nota, si antes eran buenas, ahora son mejores.
His grades, if they were good before, now they are way better.
Y él no me hace complaint de no ir a la escuela.
And he doesn't make any complaints now regarding going to school.
Ahora mi problema es, en marzo primero, él tiene que volver a Capital Prep.
So now my problem is that on March first, he has to go to Capital Prep.
Y él no va a tener los servicios.
And he's not going to have the services.
Yo como madre estoy preocupada.
As a parent, I am concerned.
Porque no es justo que mi hijo necesitando los servicios le sean negados simplemente por su criterio como maestros.
Because it's not right that my son keeps getting declined services due to the criteria that they have, that the teachers have.
Tengo otros asuntos sobre los maestros en Capital Prep y no solamente Capital Prep. En otras escuelas.
I do have other things about the teachers at Capital Prep, but not only at Capital Prep, but other schools.
Que no son escuelas públicas, son privadas, como Printech.
That are not private schools, that are not public schools, that are private schools like Printech.
Donde los maestros acosan a los estudiantes.
Where the teachers harass the students.
Y la excusa es de que supuestamente los estudiantes lo merecen, especialmente los hispanos.
And their excuse is that the students deserve it, especially the Hispanic students.
So, es mi otra preocupación, ya que tengo dos estudiantes, sobrino mío, a punto de ser expulsado.
And that is my concern, being that I have two nephews that are I have two other students, they are my nephews, and they are about to be expelled from the school.
Una high honor que fue agredida por, inducida por otro maestro o una maestra a pelear con otro estudiante.
One that is a high honor student and she was induced to fight. She was induced by another teacher or a teacher, male or female, to fight another student instead of helping.
Y en el caso de otro sobrino, que la maestra le proporcionó un tubo a mi sobrino para que se defendiera de ocho estudiantes en vez de ayudarlo con seguridad.
And then another nephew where the teacher gave him a plastic tube to attack eight students so that he can protect himself from the other students instead of calling security.
El estudiante fue suspendido, pero cuando confrontaron al maestro, el maestro dijo que no, que lo cogió.
The student was suspended, but when they spoke to the teacher, the teacher said, no, that it was the student that took it.
Mi hermana vio toda la situación porque mi sobrino tenía a mi hermana Paul Minseyer y ella vio todo y escuchó todo, pero cuando mi hermana.
My sister saw the situation because my nephew had my sister a messenger and she saw everything. Continúe.
Y en vez de darle la razón a mi hermana, lo que le dijeron es que la regañaron porque el estudiante no podía tener celular en la aula.
And instead of saying, my sister was right because she saw everything, what they did was that they said that the student was not supposed to have his cellphone in the classroom.
Eventualmente, mi hermana tuvo que cambiar sus dos hijos a otra escuela porque los maestros después de esta situación le estaban quitando puntos independientemente que ellos entregaran su trabajo.
Eventually, my sister had to put her children in a different school because the teachers were taking points off from the work even if their students were given and turning in their work on time.
So eso me hace preocupar porque cuando mi hijo entré a high school, porque está en mi de school ahora, cuando mi hijo entra a high school, tendré yo como madre que confrontar eso.
So, you know, I'm very concerned because once my son goes to high school, he's in middle school now, but once he goes to high school, I'm going to have to confront that as a parent. but once he goes to high school, I'm gonna have to confront that as a parent.
Yo sé que el presupuesto es muy, es menos de lo que esperaban este año y...
I know that the budget, I know that the budget is very low and less than expected this year.
Pero creo que hay que concentrarse en el asunto de la seguridad y reentrenamiento de los maestros que están atacando al estudi, hay que hacer una investigación, nada que...
But I think teachers need to be trained and we have to be concerned about the safety and the training for the teachers. You know, I think we have to revise everything.
Y lo último que voy a decir es que todavía no puedo creer que a estas alturas, 2023, 2024, todavía hay maestros que le digan a los estudiantes hispanos que hablen español, que esto es América.
And I can't believe that now, 2023, 2024, we have Hispanic, we have teachers saying to Hispanic students that they can speak Spanish because this is America.
Gracias, Yesenia.
That is all. Thank you.
And that concludes public comment.
Thank you. We now move on to the report of the chair. I do have a couple of items that I'd like to share with the public. The first is the Connecticut Urban District Legislative Network. Will be sending in an op ed to the Hartford Current in the next few weeks summarizing the the true devastation of pulling asset funding and advocating for transformational change that is sustainable. That is actually a byproduct of efforts from Hartford and bringing together urban districts in Connecticut and advocating for, again, sustainable change. Again, be on the lookout for that op ed, which will be coming out in the next few weeks, if not sooner. Second is the changes to the committees with the recent board member, with recent board member departures. We are now down to six board members. In order to assure that most board members can attend and maximize efficiency of the board and staff, the plan for February until the new members are appointed will be to replace monthly committee meetings with two committee of the whole meetings. The new schedule for February will be committee, committee of the whole meeting on January 20, January 31st at 4:30 p.m., replacing teaching and learning and committee meeting, committee of the whole meeting, February 12th at 8:30 a.m., replacing finance. The policy and family and community engagement committees will be canceled. However, please note that this topic will still cover what committees have on agenda and reports will still be sent. Again, I'm going to emphasize that this is temporary until new board members are appointed and on the board. Third, the board will hold its next community office hours on Wednesday, January 17th tomorrow at the Urban Hope Refuge Church located at 136 Westland Street in Hartford. This is the way for the board members to interact and engage with the community outside of these meetings. Each meetings will have a subset of the board rotating members each month. This meeting is being held in collaboration with the Northeast NRZ. As a reminder, you could find the superintendent's report, full committee reports, as well as all attachments and videos in the meeting's agenda on Board Docs. All committee and workshop meetings are live streamed as well as viewable after the meeting. The YouTube links are saved in each meeting's agenda on Board Docs. I encourage the community to view the meetings and read the reports when possible. When you have any, if you have any questions or feedback, please contact Christina Santiago, our board liaison at csantiagohartfordschools.org. We'll now move on to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you, Chairman. I have two, three. One is an echo welcome that you started with for Dr. Radley. Today is her 12th day. So thank you for joining us, Dr. Radley. And I'm gonna highlight the Superintendent Advisory Council. The S SAC provides a space for students from across the district to convene and collaborate through the design and execution of projects that improve our schools and our, and our school community. The council has already undertaken several initiatives, including a workshop or training on board governance, a competitive election to select its leadership board, and a partnership with the Connecticut School and State Finance Project that was last week to learn how schools are funded at the state level and how they can advocate for change. Next level of learning will include more local budget development process and informing those decisions. So throughout the meetings, budget and resource equity, you know, have been key issues that the S SAC wants to address this year. And so they will be engaging with Deputy Foster and several of us in an interactive session to provide input on the budget like we have done with other stakeholders. So all of the meetings are designed to build leadership skills that are incumbent to effective advocacy and productive change. And I know that our student leaders will do an update later. And then I also would like to just give a report on our attendance. And so, Ms. Santiago, if you can support with the presentation, please, just to give everyone an overview of how we were tracking in December before the year closed. So you can see here that December 2023 attendance shows continued improvement, right? And we're comparing where we are today to where we were last year. So the average daily attendance rate increased nearly one percentage point. And then the chronic absenteeism rate improved more than six percentage points since last December, the year before. And so we continue to track in the right, the right direction, thanks to all the work, the hard work across all of our schools and our district ACE team as well. If we go to the next visual, when we take a look at our chronic absenteeism by grade level, most grade levels improved rates by at least five percentage points, again, compared to where they were a year ago. Specifically, our, some of our youngest learners, kindergarten and grade three, students have shown the most improvement, reducing chronic absenteeism rates by more than 10 percentage points. You know that I say that we want to be a zero students, zero chronically absent students. So we do have ways to go, but, you know, having a double-digit reduction, we are very proud of the hard work and also the partnership with our families and our partners, our community partners. Right? We know that school avoidance continues to impact efforts to improve rates for our high school students, especially in the ninth and in the 11th grade. Right? Students in grades second through grade five miss the least, right? That's when you see the trend kind of dip and it, right, showing chronic absenteeism rates below 30%. And then go to the next visual. There's, it looks like a little, a busy slide, but essentially here, the key highlight is that when we look at chronic absenteeism by school, we notice that the number of schools with chronic absenteeism rates less than 25% actually went up. So that's a good trend. It went from having three schools with 25% or less of a chronic absenteeism rate to 12 schools from, you know, one year to the other. So again, we continue to see these great, these great trends. And lastly, just a reminder of the hard work still. And it is one of our high lever, levered strategies here, and that is continuing to do the home visitation, right? So the total number of home visits logged, 22, 23 school year, were about 5,700. And 30, about 3,600 were done by December 2022. And if we kind of forecast out the total number of home visits logged so far this year are 4,691, right? So that's an increase of about a thousand more home visits than this time last year. And so the work that schools are doing with the ACE team, the fidelity of using the data, the tools, the collaborative structures and the follow-up and supports provided to students and their families in partnership with our C community-based organizations, we know, we see, we see the improvements. And so I just wanted to highlight that, where we are. And then, you know, when we think about the focus, as we now begin quarter three and then think about ending the year in quarter four, the focus for professional learning as well as the school-based ACE teams will be centered on the multi-tiered system of support and the plans for students who are at the highest level of need, that tier two into tier, tier three, and aligning that with strong interventions that are connected to the root cause, the reason why, right, the students are chronically absent in that tier two and tier three. So I'll pause there. I see Ms. Brody has a question, so Chairman, back to you so that you can acknowledge and facilitate.
Thank you. Board Member Brody, do you have a question? Well, I'm sorry, superintendent, is that the end of your report?
Yes, it is.
Ms. Brody, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. I have two. One, what is, as far as like our students who are chronically absent or definitely trending that way? What is our protocol on, like, is it a, I'm thinking it's misunderstood by some that do you have to be absent three days in a row to take action? Like, that comment was made by one of our staff members. So I'm just trying to understand where do we say, okay? Because you're, it's not if you miss three days in a row, it's you're absent one week, the next week, the next week. So I want to understand our protocol and how that looks in the school.
Yes, and we can share that extensive protocol, Ms. Brody, but essentially the teams are monitoring students throughout, regardless of the numbers, right? But when they do hit a certain number, depending on where we are in the school year, that adds a level of intensity because we know that, say, if 10 days of schools have gone by, we know that students have missed one day out of the 10. That means that they're already chronically absent. So while the school already should be engaging in routine contact with, with the student and the families, there's an added layer when they hit specific markers, right? And the interventions then have to intensify, right? That's where the FCSSB has to, you know, support at a different level. That's where perhaps a student assistance team or the MTSS team that I, that I talked about in the tier two comes in. Or, you know, it might, it might mean that they need to go out and do the home visit. So think of it as multiple tracks, if you will, but there are key markers that we are in alignment with, with the state and where we are relative to the 180 days of instruction.
Thank you. And the next is just a comment through you, Mr. Chair. Some of the numbers like really dipped on some grades. And I always, of course, think about, you know, what can our community do? How can community members be helpful in, you know, if they're not in school, they're not learning? And that's, so when I think of that, I would like, it's nothing that you, Madam Superintendent, probably will be able to answer, but I would like for someone to get back to me and help me understand when we sign up to be like a volunteer. You sign up, you ask, answer all those questions. And I want to understand, like, what is the timeline? How is that track for people who have to, like, I'm assuming there's a background check or something happen? Because I want to say March will probably be a year that I signed up to be a volunteer in a school. You get to pick a school and choose, like, if you want to be a mentor or those things, and no one ever reached out to me. So I am a little bit cautious on telling people in the community, we need your help. Volunteer, sign up, click on the link and give your information. If we don't, if I don't understand, like, a clear protocol on what happens? Because I want to get people helping, wanting to help us more and particularly around absenteeism and whatever the school deems like. Because the school can say, this is what you might think what you want to help and how you want to help. But the school might say, well, actually, we need you to help in this way. But I would really like to, as I'm engaging the community more, push them to be volunteers, but I want to know of a protocol so I can set an expectation and we're held accountable to that expectation. And that's my, that's my comment and reflex.
Thank you, Board Member Brody. I would, I will echo that and say, let's be very clear what the volunteers are able to do. I just want to make sure that we're also set expectations of what volunteers are able to do. But I think Ms. Brody brings up a good point in terms of what is the protocol and how best can we leverage our volunteers? We now, thank you, Superintendent Torres Rodriguez. We now move on to the report of the student representatives.
Hello, I'm Uzoma and I'm the S SAC Vice President. So for our student report, it's mostly just summarizing what we spoke about in the January 9th meeting. So on Tuesday of last week, we had our Student Advisory Council meeting and a speaker, Erica Haynes, came in and she taught us about the, how the K-12 education system in Hartford is funded. So we learned about a lot of useful things such as, like, which factors affect the funding in Hartford Public Schools, for example, learning impairments and property taxes. We learned about how our funding in Hartford differs from the funding in other districts. We learned about the education cost sharing formula and we learned about the funding gap. So for the actual meeting itself, a couple pluses and deltas. A couple pluses where everyone was engaged the entire time, we were all fully focused. We were asking a lot of questions and I could just tell that we were all just taking in all of the information that was being given to us. We learned a lot of meaningful information that we were unaware of before the meeting. And the only delta I can really think of is that we had so many questions, but not enough time to ask them. So I kind of wish that the speaker could have stayed back and we could have had a little bit more time to answer our questions. And a big topic that came up towards the end of our meeting was the SGC or Student Governance Council meetings, which is a council each school is required to have in which students, parents and teachers have meetings and they discuss the events in the school and the funding in the school. So it was brought to our attention as the SSEC executives that many students have not been properly informed of the SGCs at their school. And while many schools do have an active and effective SGC, other schools have students who are very interested in joining it, but they couldn't because they didn't know about it. And without these meetings, having students in them, you kind of lose the student perspective. So we're hoping to get that a little, we're hoping to get that a little made more known to students. And a common example would be, a common example of a loss of student perspective through these SGC meetings would be Yonder pouches, which is the pouch that locks up your phone. So for our background, our S, our SSEC treasurer, Kiara Hill, researched the cost of Yonder pouches in her specific school. And because her school did not have a partnership with Yonder, they had to buy the pouches at the same rate as anyone else. And Yonder pouches are about $20 per pouch. And if our school had about 600 students, then that means the school spent around $12,000 on Yonder pouches. And many students were concerned because a lot of the money being used for the Yonder pouch, they were saying that it could have been used for other aspects of their school that were lacking. We have a few examples of this. We've heard from students that a graphic design teacher was spending over $1,000 of his personal money on screen printing supplies. A ballet teacher was buying students leotards with their own personal money. And a theater teacher was spending personal money on costumes for shows. So to segue back into the SGC meetings, if these meetings were better advertised to students and students who have a strong connection to their school joined and gave their student And students who have a strong connection to their school joined and gave their student input. About what they see every day in their schools that other adults may not. Then a stronger community could have been created in the schools and can bring forth these concerns. Before each school budget is decided in order to have a more favorable outcome for students, parents and teachers. And that concludes our report.
Or remember Uzo, I I think I speak for the board and say we um, again, very much welcome. Um, your voice, um, and your respective yourself and your colleagues. Um, I see Ms. Brody clapping. Yes, I I I, um, that was uh, by far the best report of today. Um, and I encourage um, you and your and your colleagues to continue to bring. That student voice um, to these board meetings and to these conversations. I think uh, Superintendent, I think there's, I'm sure your team is on it, but clearly I think there's some opportunities of improvement. Um, particularly for um, for our students. Um, before we move on, I do see Ms. Ledger's hands raised. Um, uh, Board Member Ledger.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to say that, that, that just warmed my heart. That made me so happy. That just. Gives us so much hope and you are really a shining light for our community. I just had to say that.
Thank you so much.
You're so welcome.
Okay, thank you. Um, now moving on to uh, the business agenda. Um, item four point one, approval of the minutes, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Motion that the Hartford Board of Education approve the minutes of December nineteenth regular meeting. Any questions or discussions? Seeing none. Uh, the motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education approves the minutes for December nineteenth regular meeting. All those are favors signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays? Abstentions, the ayes have it. Is, was there abstention?
Mine, I just.
Okay, we have one abstention. Mister Walker, okay. Um, item four point two, contract approval, Princeton Review. The motion that Hartford Board of, Board of Education authorized a superintendent to execute a contract. With. Sorry, hold on, I'm losing my uh. Sorry. With the Princeton Review for the term outlining the contract ended June thirty for twenty twenty-four at the Mount Natick Sea seventy-one thousand two hundred fifty dollars. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Superintendent?
Yes, thank you. I will uh, do an overview and then turn it over to our principal at SMSA, Principal. Um, Ambrose Wayce on the call with us. Uh, this, the purpose of this contract is to help our students. Uh, receive quality teaching and learning in order to understand. The strategies, the skills and the concepts that are so important um, and foundational to their success. Uh, this aligns to our school, their school excellence and accountability plan. Given that it is, the Princeton Review is recognized as a best-in-class test prep solution. That um, allows the understanding of each test, question type and strategic method. And it converts that knowledge into materials, content and lesson plans that deliver results and make learning fun. Um, while strengthening the tier one, the universal instruction. So this is a virtual six-week test preparation program. That will be offered to all students um, in grades nine through twelve at the school. And each session is two hours totaling a number of four hours a week for the six weeks. And so um. This, in terms of measurement, right? We know that we have the, the, the pre-SAT. Uh, that we use the information to support our students and then we have the SAT data. And so, right, this, this will be a benchmark and then a post uh, review and comparison. Um, and it will also inform uh, the decisions that the leadership team makes to support. Our educators and our students. So I will, I will pause there um, for any questions um, to our. Uh, principal.
Yeah, uh, I see. Board Member Brody's hand. You have the floor.
Thank you. So I don't know that this is a question um, for the principal. Um, um. First um, question um, is do we have a list of um, as far as like the ESR funds? And which schools have requested and been awarded um, ESR funds? Not um. Not things that have gone to everybody, but the ones that have come before the board in their, in their school specific. Like, are we tracking those?
Uh, Board Member Brody, Gex?
Mm-hmm.
I think we could certainly track that. Is it relating to this? I just want to make sure we get through this contract.
Yeah, this contract is one of those things that if you guys voted up, will be on that list that I'm requesting.
Awesome. Um, Superintendent?
Yes, we can, we have a list of of the spend. Um. And I'm wondering if this is around this uh, Scaling Equity Innovation Grant, which are school-specific funds. And schools determined um, how to um, allocate those funds. And so. Um, as it relates to this specific.
Yeah, Superintendent Torres Rodriguez, you're correct. It is from our Innovations Grant or SEIG.
So to answer your question, Ms. Brody, yes, we have a, we can get you a list of the amounts um. And the schools, for all the schools, because all the schools got SEIG funds.
Cause I think I remember SMSA coming before. So could the schools also have like the amount? Because they may have used some of what they were awarded and then they're using some more. Um, and I'm, because when I first read through the um. Through the item, I just thought about equity. We're gonna have. Um, one high school and I, because I don't know that other high schools have any, um. Maybe they've um, maybe it's money that didn't reach the level that they needed to come before the board that with the board does not know about in regards to. Something similar. Um, but I'm worrying, I'm wondering about the equity and opportunity. Of nine through twelve graders that do not attend SMSA. I applaud SMSA for saying this is what we want for our students, but I am thinking about. Nine through twelve that won't have access to this, um, this type of prep or maybe they will and I'm just not aware of it. So I don't um, expect a question, a answer at this moment, of course, but I definitely would like that data.
Okay, so I I think uh, what I heard is just a more broader um, discovery um, to Ms. Brody's point. Um, in the, from a lens of equity, making sure that other, other schools have a, a similar opportunity to what's being presented here today. Um, looking at. My TV screen to see if there's any other. Raised hands or questions from my colleagues. Um, we'll go with Board Member Walker, followed by Board Member Ledger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um. The question is, uh, was there um, investigation of um. Um, other online tools available to students for test prep? I um. The way that I'm reading this, um. This is directed towards what it looks to be um, essentially a, a course-type offering for six weeks. Um, and it, it, so my question is, have, were other op. Online options offered, because that are investigated. Um, it would seem like there'd be opportunities for online offerings for students, maybe may need to put some funding support, but they could take the online offering. On their own time schedule and um, and not necessarily be um, constrained to just one. Um, kind of block of time to get this um, this benefit. Um, so I'd like to see here um, some feedback on um, other offerings beyond just this one course format.
Principal Ambrose, can you um. Respond to any other flexibility in terms of the, the timeline for students to access? Um, and if they don't access, how will that be leveraged? Um, by educators to support other students? I know that there's, that's a longer-term plan.
Yes, no, thank you for the question. Thank you for repeating that, Superintendent.
Can I just interject? I think I also heard, why Princeton Review?
If you can repeat that last part, I was just having difficulty hearing that part.
I, I believe I heard in the question, wh- why, like, why Princeton Review? Were there other? Other options, other alternatives? Was that? Mister Walker, was that, is that right?
Um. Yes, it, in, in the sense that, um, this is a virtual offering and. I'm just understanding, believing there's lots of online offerings that provide. Um, preparation for standardized tests.
Yep.
Yes, so I can answer those questions. So first, there is flexibility because. In the years past, when we offered it, it was only offered at its set time. Right? And we are offering virtual sessions when we know that all of our students do have a one-to-one device, so they can access it. In the comfort of their home or at school. And we're offering multiple sessions leading up to. The six weeks before the SAT School Day in April, the first week in April. So we are offering three different sessions, three thirty, five thirty and seven thirty. For students to be able to log on virtually, Monday, Wednesday or Tuesday, Thursday. And if they miss a session, for example, if they're out. Ill or they had a prior commitment, they can just log on to the next session. So we are offering that flexibility and that came from our student feedback. We did a interest form to see their availability. Through our advisory and those are the times and the days that worked specifically for our students, not Friday, they said. So we're very excited to be able to offer that. As well as information sessions for parents and caregivers, for them to understand the importance of it and for students to understand. And we chose um, Princeton Review was chosen before I got there. But I did um, speak to the committee of the whole last week and I talked about how I chose that for my own nephew. When he was going through um, his studies and now has graduated with his master's program. It is a program that has been skill-based and it focuses on meeting the students where they are at. Based upon their PSAT scores or based upon the assessments that they give the students through the Princeton. Princeton Review, because we know more exposure to the test helps students feel comfortable, so then we could really assess what they know. And what they're able to do. And we chose um, Princeton Review because of all of the positive um. Nationwide information that we have received um, on choosing Princeton Review. I used it in my previous district as well and saw that students um, had a lot of gains with Princeton Review. And they really personalize it to meet the needs of our students. And then we would hope that in those sessions, one administrator would be present or a teacher, so then we can sustain this program. For future years to come, when we no longer have the contract. How can our teachers be um. Provided the information, the resources, the technology to start their own tutoring sessions after school to help students?
Thank you. Um, Board Member Ledger, followed by Board Member Johnson.
Thank you so much. And thank you for the explanation with regards to why you chose Princeton Review. Um, my question is, with the times that the students are able to access this um, this learning at home. Or practice, the three thirty, five thirty and seven thirty, I believe. Um, is there a way that you're going to be um, tracking to make sure? That it's actually the student who's doing this as opposed to maybe a parent who wants them to really do well. Um. Or, you know, or another family member or a friend or something, like how often are you going to be? Um, I don't want to get into the weeds, but I'm just curious as to how you're monitoring that.
That's an excellent question. Um, that is our focus for this school year is progress monitoring and helping students understand that. What I presented to the committee of the whole is that every student will be given a contract and will know their PSAT or their SAT scores. And what benchmark we're trying to help them obtain through the Princeton Review. And then students will have to sign off on that contract as well as parents. And while it's virtual, it is required that they are showing their face. Right? To be part of that, so they can feel a part of this um, tutoring and test preparation community. And they can ask questions. So it's not going to be something that where they can just be passive. They really have to be engaged in the learning and demonstrating. That they are uh, working towards meeting proficiency in English and in math. So that is the focus. And then if they are out, then they get a personalized phone call and letter. Saying you missed this session, we really need you to get, to get to the other session. This is what I did in my previous district and we had a lot of gains and the, the focus. Um, to your point was that really monitoring their progress, their attendance and their engagement and participation. That's where we saw the most gains.
Board Member Johnson?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. Um, you know, fir- first I want to say thank you so much for um. Uh, your, your service to, to our school, all right? SMSA is uh, one of the schools that have been. Uh, you know, that have just gone through a lot. And so I appreciate your stability. Um, to that school and certainly appreciate your diligence in coming here tonight to make sure that. You know, our students have something that's, that's really, really worthwhile. Um, I, I, I don't have a question at all. I, I just want to say that I am certainly voting uh, yes for this. Um, you know, because I think. When, when we think of practice and just understanding and making sure that our children are prepared. This kind of meets the mark for me, just as, you know, just as a parent. And so I, I think that if this is a direction that you want to go uh, within your school. Uh, I, I, I support it. So just wanted to say that and uh, just thank you for everything you do. For that school and providing the stability and leadership. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Want to see if there are any questions? Um, seeing that I do want to make a comment, um, and it, it goes back to. Um, I think the, the theme that uh, Board Member uh, Brody uh, brought up more so. Um, we'll love to make sure that um, other schools have an opportunity to, to do something similar to this. Um, and again, I think in the lens of equity, um, we need to make sure that. Um, all of our schools are getting information um, uh, in, in a, uh, in the most efficient manner. And I think that also speaks to uh, part of the um. Student representative reports of making sure all of our schools are, are on par. So. I just wanted to make that for public consumption. Um, that being said. Um, the motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education authorized the superintendent to execute. A contract with Princeton Review for a term outlining the contract ended June thirty for twenty twenty-four at the Mount Natick Sea seventy-one thousand two hundred fifty dollars. All those are favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
One nay, abstentions? The ayes have it, motion moves. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your help and support and your time.
Moving to item four point three, second reading, adoption, second reading and adoption policy. Forty-one thirteen point six, remote work and policy forty-one fifteen point three, coach, coaches evaluation. Um. Motion that the Hartford Board of Education adopts the policy forty-one thirteen. Remote work and remote and policy forty-one fifteen point three, cultures evaluation. Um, do I have a motion?
Still move?
Second.
Board Member Johnson?
Yes, thank you. Uh, through you, Mr. Chair. Um, sorry, I had to get up and close my door, because I don't know who thought. A four-day weekend uh, with kids home was a, was a great thing to do. But anyway. Uh, um, I speak for all the parents out there that are, uh, they got their kids for four days, so. Uh, four, one, one, three point six.
Uh, four, one, one, three point six, uh, and four, two, one, three points since remote work. Uh, engagement with staff and unions, I mean, engagement with staff inform the remote work policy. Which allows employees to work from home or an approved location using technology without changing their employment. The superintendent and designated will consider remote uh, request on a case-by-case basis. With certain circumstances like ADA accommodations, emergencies, or special projects being eligible. Uh, and this policy has been discussed. Uh, for uh, you know, for, for a little while now, we've gotten some decent feedback about it, and uh, we're here for our second reading. Are there any questions?
What was that, Board Member Johnson?
Uh, I'm just putting it back into your hands. I asked for questions, not hearing any questions.
Okay, and this is, this was for both, both policies, correct? Forty-one, forty-one thirteen point six and forty-one fifteen point three?
Oh, my apologies. Second reading for our coach evaluation. Please forgive me. We also, well.
Yep.
Yes, it was for both. On, on this agenda item, on remote work. I do have an item for uh, a second reading is, as well. Um, four, one, one, five point three, coach evaluation. This is going to be our second reading as well. The policy requires an annual evaluation. Of coaches conducted by athletic director or immediate supervisor with written feedback provided to each coach. The purpose of evaluation include improving coaching effectiveness, analyzing strengths and weaknesses. And informing decisions on employment and recommendations to the Board of Education. That is both items up for a second reading. Remote work and coach evaluation.
I, I do not have a, a question. I do have a comment, um, as I was a part of the discussion um. A committee for this particular item, um, and as a former uh, D one athlete. Um, I cannot stress the importance of how much uh, a good coach played in my development. Um, and not necessarily coaching from a standpoint of wins and losses, but more so around character building. And being a um, a productive citizen. So again, I think any tool that helps um, our coaches. Um, improve their skills and um, how they interact or engage with our student athletes um, is a positive.
Mister Chair, I want to uh, uh, agree with that. Um, this weekend, I saw a shirt that said, not all heroes wear capes. Uh, summer coaches and like, I, I really want to just elevate that. Uh, in our committee meeting, um, there was some really, really great dialogue. On this, and I really wanna, I, I didn't realize we had over a hundred and twenty plus coaches at the Hartford Public Schools hires. And so just shout out to all of them and hopefully this makes their job better.
Board Member Brody?
Yes, I s- in the lang- like, was, how can I say that? Excuse me. Because there's a, with that said, right, a lot of coaches. Is there a schedule of um, evaluations? That's probably my only question, because I see that there's a um. Like, there's a checklist, but is everyone just getting? Um, is it a schedule or how many times? I guess I'm, I might not be seeing that, because there's a lot of rap, meaning. You guys work really hard on this.
Uh, yes, um, we, we can bring in Dr. Silver, if, if you are like, my understanding. Uh, of this is that we're setting the evaluations up, so uh, these things can happen and it be formalized in a formalized way. Um, I believe the details will, will be worked out, um, you know, once approved, but certainly I'll hand it over to Dr. Silver. Uh, for more insight.
Thank you so much, uh, Pastor AJ. And yes, thank you for your question, Ms. Brody, which is a really good one. Our coaches, because our seasons, uh, this applies to all coaches and our seasons run at different times of the year. Based on the sport that we are, um, that's currently underway. So this can be, um, we do have. Guidance in the document for completing evaluations, although if someone says a, a coach for a fall sport. Uh, we might not wait until the end of the year to complete the evaluation, because we'd like to give feedback as soon as the uh, season is over.
Thank you.
Mister Chair, fa- finally, just on this topic, and that was a great question, um, Board Member Brody. Um, we, we also wanted to, I remember superintendent and I going to the um. The Weaver Hartford High game and sitting in the stands and just talking to a mom who. Uh, has a, you know, uh, has a daughter, um, you know, a part of the coaching team from another school. And it kind of prompted a question or just some, uh, some insight into this policy, just to make sure we evaluate coaches that are. Uh, have students from other schools, making sure that they're uh, engaging them in a meaningful way as a part of their um, evaluation, because. We, you know, we do know one school can be looked at, you know, uh. You know, looked at better than the other school according to the coach's eyes, a perspective on who he wants to play, but we wanted to make sure that there's some equity. Um, amongst the players uh, in the coaching, and so that they're evaluated on how they engage students from other schools as well. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you. I'm just pausing to see if I see any other hands. Okay, seeing none. Actually, I'm sorry, before I do that, I do want to pause to see if our student representatives have any. Comments or questions. On this particular agenda item.
I don't have any questions.
Board Member Ledger?
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry, I just had a question, um, with regards to just cultural competency. Um, is there some type of cultural competency um, component? To the evaluation, because I'm thinking um, about. You know, whether there are the, the cultural piece that a, a student may bring to. That particular sport or, you know, bring to school. Is there um, you know. That cultural sensitivity, if you will. Is there something that's, that's kind of embedded in that? Would you be able to answer that question, Dr. Silver?
Thank you, Mister Estelle Ledger, and thank you for that question. I, I still appreciate the value that our board places on cultural competence. And being uh, being, celebrating all the different uh. Groups that we do serve and, and the diversity there. We do have a section under professional and interpersonal relations. And um, the coach is required to develop positive relationships with all athletes, including, as Pastor AJ mentioned. Uh, co-op um, athletes, maybe from other schools that are coming together to form a team, a unifying team. Um, also that the, that the coach developed positive athlete, uh, positive relationship with athletes. The student body on the whole, faculty members, parents and community, game officials, opponents and media. Um, and there is also uh, the call that they set a positive example in ethics, moral standards, appearance, manner, behavior. And language. Uh, that they teach uh, fundamental skills, provide high caliber instruction and um. Um, in terms of performance, uh, that they. The coaching related performance, and I'm, I'm reading the evaluation worksheet here, um, that they. Are aware of competitive performance and what it requires academic, attend to academic performance of students and sportsmanship performance. But there is not a specific reference to cultural uh, competence. So if you feel that the areas here are uh, that we may need to rework the particular form that we're using. Um, that can certainly be added.
Okay, thank you, uh, Dr. Silver. Uh, Board Member Walker?
Uh, thank, thank you, uh, Mister Chair. Um. My uh, comment was, uh, I guess as a part of um, what you were saying, Mister Chair, I do think uh. Great cho- coach does um, make a difference. Um, what I was looking for on the form was um. Um, academic performance, I, I, I noted it in the fifteen. I, I know when my nephews were um, in high school sports, um. Their mother, other parents formed kind of. A support group for the, for the team to support academic performance and overall school engagement while they're on the team and. It can't be the coach's total job, but I, I'm just, as a comment, uh, um. Celebrating the form and, and, and hope that it encourages. Coaches and their supporters to support academic performance and school engagement. As well as the athletic performance and, and I'm happy to see some of that's in the form and would love to see. It move the needle in those ways. Uh, that's the end of my comment.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Ed adopts policies forty-one thirteen point six, remote work. And policy forty-one fifteen point three, culture evaluation. All those in favor signify by saying aye? Any nays? Abstentions? I believe the ayes have it, uh, Miss Santiago, can you please show the? Thank you. Um, moving to item four point four, first reading, policy fifty-one eleven, admission and placement. Board Member Johnson?
Yes, thank you. Uh, through you, Mister Chair. Uh, we'll have our first reading of uh, policy five, one, 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 mission. Um, placement. Our policy commi- committee needed to adjust the admissions policy to reflect. Legislative changes requiring a kindergarten student to be five years old by September first of enrolling. School year. There is new information also related to ensuring students who experience housing insecurity. Are able to participate in regular schooling. Enrolling students return, returning from juvenile detention in schools operated. By the Department of Children and Families. Also revised due to legislation changes. Is the age and process of withdrawal requiring students to undergo a review of optional programs. With family members and schools staff prior to withdrawal. Um, just to let everyone know, our next policy committing, committee meeting on February fifth, we will conduct a second reading. Of the admissions placement policy five, one, 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 and a first reading to our cell phone policy five, one, three, one point eight one. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Board Member Johnson. Uh, are there any questions as it relates to the first reading for policy fifty-one eleven? Seeing no hands raised, as this is the first reading, no vote is required. Now, moving on to uh, the uh, agenda item five, executive session pending claims and uh, litigation personnel discussion. With uh, Dr. Torres Rodriguez. Item five point one, motion to enter into executive session. All those in favor, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Any, any nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it, will be taken into executive session, superintendent Torres Rodriguez, Attorney Lori Miseric. Uh, and Christina Santiago. And sorry, I, I apologize, and Attorney Ed Wilson. All those, all everyone else, I believe can exit the room, or Christina, I'm not sure if we're.
Yep.
Going to enter into another chat.
Saying feel free to run the credits and um. I will kick you. Yep. And staff, thank you for joining. Feel free to log off. And students, thank you.